Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blue gel cactus two minutes.
Okay. I think I got it. You don't wait on me.
You've got it. About one approved at the end?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Approval of minutes from November 16th. Counting eight in what fashion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor? I got slow down jail to get out here tomorrow.
I'm coming every town from now on.
Yeah.
Where's our police?
He's not available to get on. I have to report.
Oh, okay. All right, apartment reports. City clerk, manager.
Financial report, there is no statement of revenues and expenditures included with this report as the statements, bank statements have not all come in for reconciliation to be done. We'll have a report ready for you at the next meeting. The audit began on Monday, November 27th and things are going well. I make sure to have all the reports and documents in order and we are moving along as expected. Once the audit in the complete report is available, there will be a presentation of the results as soon as we are able to coordinate the date and time. Maintenance, the owner maintenance truck with the dump bed is currently being repaired so that it would be usable. At the February 16th council meeting, council voted and approved unanimously repairs up to $800 and the estimate received from Town and Country was well under that. Since they did such a wonderful job recently on the repairs and maintenance for the sanitation truck, it made sense to send this job their way. Having this truck will help Mr. Fawcett with jobs around the city and will ensure that we are not without a maintenance vehicle when one is being serviced or repaired. I mean, the vehicle is paid for, it's not like we, you know, are having to make payments on it, so once we get it up and running, it will be a valuable asset. Sanitation, as I said in the last thing, the sanitation truck was recently serviced at Town and Country. This was the first time in many years that the truck received a proper service, including oil change, new filters, hydraulic fluid, flushing fluid, checking for any problems that may be on the horizon. When we passed the budget for this fiscal year, I made sure to include the costs of such maintenance because regular preventative work is a lot cheaper than work done in a crunch. The sanitation employees appreciate being able to come in and ask that work be done without concern due to lack of money available for such things. It makes their job a lot easier. Now, if only we could do something about the smell of garbage. Information on the January 2nd, 2018 council meeting. The council meeting for next month is scheduled to be on Tuesday, January 2nd at 7:00 PM. Please note that this will take place on a Tuesday rather than a Monday due to the New Year holiday. If there is anything that the council would like to see addressed, please let me know so that I can add it to the agenda. We will begin the meeting promptly at 7:00 PM with a call to order and pledge of allegiance. But before we go any further, I would like to have the swearing in of the newly elected officials. We will also take some time for pictures and then we will get down to business. Miscellaneous, as mentioned at the last meeting, I will be at training next week. I'm going to be checking regular mail, email, and keeping up with phone calls since training will be local. These are makeup classes from the September Clerks Conference which was canceled due to Irma. I'm looking forward to bringing more valuable information back to the city. I also want to mention and give thanks to the Ball Ground Botanical Club, Leah Kelly and Ms. Beverly for helping with the decorations and the flowers. They've been donating their time, I don't know if you saw them when we came in, just keeping those flower bed, the flower buckets looking nice and there's some reason, just some simple decorations which really spritzes the front of City Hall up, makes it a welcoming place. They do their, the work free of cost, we just pay for supplies such as flowers and things like that. And also, since this is the last meeting of the year, I wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, or Happy Holidays, so I don't offend anybody. Next is the police report. And Lieutenant Simmons was unable to be here. He had vacation time, the audacity of him, that he had to take, so he is not here, but he did go ahead and send over a report which I can present. Total calls for service or self-generated activity in November is 11. A breakdown of calls includes four traffic stops, one alarm, one accident, one domestic dispute, one entering auto which was mentioned at the last meeting, one suspicious person, one suspicious vehicle, and one misdemeanor assault. Significant events or calls for service include, the November 1st, we took another entering auto report on Dogwood Pass, it was reported on at the last meeting, but that was for October, they wanted to include this one since it was actually reported in November. On November 22nd, Deputy Jordan responded to an address on Hillside Street for a dispute between a father and a son. The father was arrested for simple battery against his son. On November 29th, Deputy Carter and Deputy Martin responded to Pickens Street for an assault, female victim, one female alleged another female had assaulted her. After investigation, the victim had left the area and was not located. The suspect had outstanding warrants and was arrested. The alleged assault was a punch to the mouth. Other activity within the city, we continue to patrol the city at random intervals as our call volume allows. While we concentrate our patrol efforts on the Cherokee side, we are often in the Pickens side of the city too. We are concentrating our efforts in subdivisions and neighborhood streets, but are also keeping an eye on city property as well. We are monitoring the newly reestablished three-way stop at Pickens Street Church slash Hillside. We anticipate several folks running the stop. When Deputy Martin and Carter were on the battery call on Pickens Street, November 29th, they observed a few almost running. So, we basically had put the signs up, covered them with the bags, gave it almost two weeks to kind of get used to it, and it's expected that people are going to run it at first. They'll start enforcing it after some time.
All right, number six, I'm in this business. Vote on the raise for the city manager.
Okay, at the last council meeting which took place on November 16th, the council voted to make the appointment of Tina Monahan, the city manager, permanent after a six-month probationary period as interim city manager. While the raise was discussed at the executive session at the time of the initial appointment, in the interest of being transparent, I thought it was wise for the council to vote on the amount in a public meeting so that it can go on record.
So, what do you just want us, do you want the amount public or you just wanting it to be public that we're giving you a raise?
I mean, I guess just what, how should we handle that?
You're doing to make it whatever you're doing public, so if it's an increase in hourly rate or overall increase, just state whatever that is.
We had said that after six months that she would be put to $20 an hour after it was, like, she was made the permanent city manager. So, make a motion to approve the adjustment at $20 an hour since she's now the permanent city manager.
All in favor? Number seven, you business discussing vote on whether or not move forward on the agreement in regards to cell tower on the city property.
A few months back, I was approached about the possibility of putting a cell tower on one of our city properties. There was some discussion back and forth, and after receiving some valuable information on the topic, I wanted to bring it before the council. Cell phones have become an everyday part of most people's lives, they are used for work, school, and personal reasons. In order for these to work, there needs to be towers with antennas in regular intervals so that service can remain regular and constant. We have all heard and experienced the complaints about poor cell service in and around the city. Most people have had to install a landline in order to ensure that phone calls can be made and received. Included with this is a PowerPoint of valuable information as well as a sample agreement and a map of the best area to place the cellphone tower that will be of benefit to the city. The PowerPoint breaks down the objectives, shows test drive results for service of several of the main carriers, includes a site plan, lease agreement terms, recurring revenue breakdown, and answers some frequently asked questions in regards to cell towers. So, I'm going to take a moment to kind of go through that. Obviously, y'all can read through it on your own time, but the objective is to provide additional coverage for the commercial, industrial, and residential properties in and around the city of Nelson. There is a significant, significant service gap for multiple carriers in the city as well as along Highway 372 Canton Road. This tower will also be a form of rate occurring revenue for the jurisdiction. On the next page, next couple of pages, you'll see test drive results. Shows signal strength in various areas, there's Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. And then, these pages aren't numbered, I'm sorry. After that's done is the site plan. So, what they were referring to is the property up here on Blue Ridge, we already have that paved area where the old marble, there's one marble building still there, but then you go up on the hill there. And it's kind of a high point. And initially, they were talking about putting one of those big giant monsters that would have required much more space, but coming back after speaking to them about something affecting it smaller and space saving, they said that they can do a, I think it's a monopole is what it's called, so it's a singular pole as opposed to more like a multiple.
A tower.
Yeah, it's a tower. I also spoke with him because I know that certain areas get what they call, I think they're called mono pines?
They are, they're mono pines.
Okay, and they, so it looks like a pine tree, kind of fits in with the landscape as opposed to maybe like a, just a silver metal pole or whatever have you. We started out, and this is, all this is negotiable, and that's just kind of what I'm looking for direction, but it would be, their starting point was $800 per month for one year, and then going up in terms after that, more monthly. It's, it's just, it's income for the city and it also helps in that we have cellphone services as well. So, if we go with $800 a month, it would be $9,600 annually income to the city. They predict a 10-year revenue at that rate to be $96,000 in 10 years, that the city would make lease entirety, which is 55 years, which we can also negotiate, would be $651,738.84. And there were some questions which I thought were interesting in terms of public safety. According to the American Cancer Society, public exposure to radio waves from cellphone tower antennas is slight for several reasons. The power levels are relatively low, the antennas are mounted high above ground level, and the signals are constantly, signals are transmitted intermittently rather than constantly. Studies today provide no indication that environmental exposure to RF fields such as from base stations increases the risk of cancer or any other disease. And studies have shown that environmental levels of RF energy routinely encountered by the general public are far below levels necessary to produce significant heating and increased body temperature. Not so much now, but I know when, you know, when cellphone towers were first being built, you know, everybody was, you know, the cancer scares and health issues that it was causing were of big concern. And then, additional facts, over 70% of 911 calls in the United States are placed from wireless phones and the rate is increasing. Over 50% of US households do not have a landline telephone, but do have at least one wireless telephone. Mobile data traffic will increase seven times from 2016 to 2021. So, after that, is this really long packet of papers which is the auction and ground lease agreement which I sent to Jeff to kind of take a gander. Georgia Municipal Association also has a section, a department which deals specifically with this because it's a point in time municipalities were really getting taken advantage of. So, I had also sent it over to them and I'm waiting to hear back from them to look at because they have really helped out municipalities in making sure that the agreement is fair, fair for everyone and on the up and up as opposed to taking advantage of us. So, not only does it help the city and the residents in terms of cell service, but it's also a source of revenue for the city, money to use property that we already own and that does nothing more than sit there at the moment. The placement of the tower would allow for us to use this property in the future for other endeavors as well, and I made sure that it wasn't like right square in the middle of it to where we couldn't use it for a park or to build on it and make basically that acre useless, I didn't want that to happen. So, what I'm doing is asking the council to vote on whether or not to move forward with the agreement in regards to a cell tower on city property, but more or less, what I want to do is just have your blessing to move forward with researching and kind of going back and forth and, of course, from the final product to everybody's satisfaction, Jeff and whomever else, then we can bring it back forward.
I'll make a motion for see, I'd be curious to see what they, what all entails, and it would be nice to, it'll ease my phone without standing in one spot on my report.
Right. I think you need to contact the neighboring property owner and ask them for you.
Yeah.
Go forward with this.
Yeah. And the representatives from the company said that they would also be willing to go out and speak to residents that, or come here in a forum and speak to any residents that have any issues, they would bring their facts, their figures, whatever we needed. And then, this, like I said, this vote is not to put it on there, it's not a final.
Just for more information.
Yes, just to get more information. I didn't want to go ahead and spend all this time and energy getting all this information and then y'all would be like, what, where did this come from?
Is it showing it to be right into, right where the old marble building used to be?
Oh, no, it's kind of, I got hold of it. Have a reference point, I'm sorry.
Right up above the dump truck. You know, that negative, that was the dump truck there.
Yeah, well, in this picture, you'll see, they were actually considering moving it over and on that, oh, I have this, go to the last picture there, in that, it's after the packet and the agreement. This picture was actually the initial area that they were going to require if they had one of those ginormous, I guess, four posts for lack of a better term, tower, but they said that they can actually put it real close to where the maintenance truck is there, if you can see that in that picture. James, if you can point that out.
Right to top of that vine.
Somewhere close to that concrete, to where they're not disturbing too much greenery and grass, but still giving, and making access, easy access. So, and I mean, I can get more, they will give more specific, more detailed pictures and options of various places they can put it because I did tell them that we would like as many options as possible.
The way they have the proposed agreement structured right now, it's not only, it's not, it's an option first.
Right.
They pay us $800 a year for up to three years for them to examine and determine whether they do actually want to build something there, and then if they choose to, they start and they start figuring it out.
And the tower obviously is not something that we have to maintain, which is also important. We're not, they're, they're maintain, they're building it, they're maintaining it, we're just collecting money.
Not a very big spot for them to put it, 77 to 130. That takes up whole top parking lot, don't it?
That initial area would have, for the initial one, it would have, yeah.
That's if they did the big giant.
Yeah, that's if they did it, and I said that was too much, I said that, yeah, that's why I wanted the, the pole, ask them if they could use the pole structure instead of the, I guess, traditional tower structure.
They normally could have fenced in area all the way around to two of them.
And that's what would require with that, that's, that line right there is the fenced-in area for one of those other ones, it's significantly smaller.
So, what they got mapped out for the one they want?
I'm waiting to get back on that because that's something that I had just thrown up, some more options.
In front of us when you get what they propose.
Yes, of course, all that will be in front of it, but like I said, I didn't want to invest too much time and energy in something that, you know, unless I had your, the blessing to move forward with that.
Either, either way you look at it, they take 100 by 100.
So, that takes up a whole parking lot.
Then, then they go, they go 80 by 80 is a fenced-in area and everything is contained in the 80 by 80. That's any cell site, unless you have and put a sub remote small site in, you can ask them to do a small site, but usually all cell sites are on 100 by 100 right away and then 80 by 80 fenced in.
Remember right on top of your head, I might pay for you to sit there, what they're building to do.
Close to there.
That's what I was saying. So, we could actually go on the bank above the parking lot.
Or it could go like right in front, there were different areas that they, like I said, I wanted, I wanted them to come back and present me with as many options as possible for us to obviously make educated, educated decisions. I mean, there were some other city properties that they looked at, but they didn't, you know, with, have needing access to it, like we have a small lot over here on Blue Ridge Avenue going out toward Highway 5, which would provide them access, but it would be, it would be difficult.
What about up here where the water tank is?
That's another area that I brought up.
Acceleration in there, really, but. But I talked to the property owners and then cut back. I wouldn't live in my yard, and my son owns the property next door, I know he ain't going around his kids. But you can talk to him and see what he says.
Where's the water tank at, David?
Talk it up.
It's where the half basketball court is.
Old Pickens.
Old Pickens Street.
But anywhere we put it, you know, we need to talk to the property owners before anything is really done.
Yeah, and I mean, we don't have to move forward with it at all, I just want to make sure that we, you know, at least.
I don't, because I like a phone reception myself. I wouldn't want to pay down somebody's property and extra money there.
Like I said, I didn't want to invest too much time with everything going on with this unless I had y'all's blessing to move forward and then we can spend more time, and it would be, you know, it would have been a waste to spend a lot of energy and then it'd be, you know, no interest.
That's a, make a motion to approve talking and, and more information from them.
You did that, right?
They did say.
Yes.
I just don't think it was ever, they never had a second or a dismiss or whatever.
So, your motion wants to move forward with exploring it?
Yes.
You second it?
Yeah, I say.
Of moving second, all in favor? And discussing vote on purchasing new computers and updated software for the City Hall.
Throughout my time here, I have encountered numerous issues in regards to the outdated software and computers here at City Hall. Several of the running systems and programs currently in use are no longer serviced by the company that issued them. As the government entity, we are responsible for the upkeep of records and are at risk of losing it all. A couple of weeks back, I had to call in our IT guy to help me fix a problem so that our billing system would work for property taxes. He did what he could, but warned that we were heading in a bad direction. The company that serviced our software also gave me the same warning. So, rather than wait until a catastrophe happens, I would like to be proactive. The best computer we have is the one that I use on a daily basis. The ones in the other office and the police office are obsolete and will cost more money to fix than would be worth it. I would like to clean up the one in my office in case we were to need an extra and then have one built to meet our needs and specifications. We could buy one out of the box, but then we would be in the same predicament in a year or two. We have plenty of money in the budget for this expenditure and I would like to see us get up to date and into the future. The possibility of a server would also be ideal as it would allow us to store information in a safe backup format which most municipalities already have. In a day and time where a kid can break into almost any computer from their Xbox gaming system, we can never be too safe. And the reason I mention that is because it was a teenager up the street that got on their Xbox and locked me out of the Wi-Fi. They changed the city's Wi-Fi password and we had no access to our own Wi-Fi. They were also almost successful at attempting to break into our computer. So, it just shows that kids are a lot smarter than we give them credit for. ETC had to come out and we fought it, and needless to say, I went ahead and changed password and security and had them help me out and all that, but we went two days without internet service in the city because, you know, up here at City Hall because that happened and we didn't realize what the problem was. In terms of what we've done in the past, pretty much gone to, I guess, looking off Best Buy, Staples, whatever have you, and have purchased a computer and then tried to take a computer that you and I could buy to kind of do home stuff, and we've tried to make it work. My computer system works on one of the Microsofts, and when I called them to ask them a question, they're like, we don't, that's obsolete, we don't service that, we don't, you know, there's nothing we can do about that.
You mean to have one built for the specs?
Yeah. This first spec, yeah, and then, you know, also, if it's both, you can, you know, they build them so that you can add one if that need be in case. And apparently, the city had a laptop at one point in time, I have no idea.
Some sticky fingers.
Where that went. But I was looking through some paperwork and found that the, the city had bought a laptop and I guess the city manager was using it, and then it was apparently left here after she left, but I don't know where.
I thought it was in the police department.
No?
I think Larry's got that.
I don't know, I can try to get ahold of him and ask him.
But it's been a while of the, in the same situation.
But also, when you have someone that, you know, builds a computer, they know how to service it, they know how to fix it or whatever have you, and like I said, we did, I did go ahead because we had had a situation when I was still a council member, and I believe it was Miranda and also Lou, had both had situations where come property tax billing time, trying to download all that information and get it in the system, it just totally crashed it, black screen. It's kind of one of those, you can only do CPR on something so much before it's just not going to work anymore.
Yeah. The money's been in the budget for a while, it just hasn't been.
Yeah.
How much, how much money you talking about?
That, I mean, I wasn't, I'm meeting with a gentleman, because we had the audit start last week, I wasn't able to meet with him, so I'm meeting with him, I believe it is Thursday, and he is going to draw up proposals, and I can also contact you all in regards to that as well. I mean, there is $6,000 in the budget, but I don't want to, of course, spend that, that also includes like IT and general maintenance and repairs and stuff like that, and he wasn't talking, basically, the way he said it to me is pretty much what you would get a high quality decent computer for. It would be less than a Mac, less than a Mac for him to build a computer.
We bought a couple of those.
I did some estimates and let us know what it'd be. We'd go from there. That's bound to be.
Okay, so bring it, get all the information that.
Just so we have estimates, we want to just go and give a range or something, and so it would just be open-ended and.
Like I said, I'm sorry, I hope to have it, I'd hope to have it before then, but the audit took priority.
What kind of people you can get them from or just the one guy or?
Well, I'm going to, I've gotten, I've talked to some other people that, you know, also build them or whatever have you. This gentleman also has worked, one of my preferences for him is that he works with other municipalities, so he knows about software, what municipalities require and security and things like that, that's kind of why I was leading his way. Other people did give me options, but they were just kind of basing on what they would, you know, one guy offered to build us a phenomenal gaming system. I don't, I don't have much use for that, so. So, I will bring back, we will, I will put it on another agenda and try to bring back more information with more specifics for everybody at that time.
All right, seven seats discussing vote on whether or not to fire a detailed formal policy in regards to curation, threats, and harassment against the city employees.
I put it in here, but I can't say it enough, the fact that I even have to bring this up before the council saddens me. I put it in here, but I'm, I can't say it enough, the fact that I even have to bring this up before the council saddens me. But I think it's something that needs to be addressed so that we can once and for all stop the harassment of employees that work for the city. Before moving forward, I want to say that this applies to only a handful of people who seem to have issues behaving accordingly when it comes to city employees. Most residents are gracious, kind and make working here a joy. There have been some issues where people think they can come into email or call City Hall, acting like a sailor, making threats and doing things such as driving by to place of residence and yelling profanities, flipping the bird, et cetera, et cetera. A common thing that seems to be repeated is, I know where you live. I've heard that several times and I'm glad you know where I live, but, you know, that's unacceptable. It's unacceptable behavior and while it doesn't occur all the time, it shouldn't occur at all. There have been times when things were so out of control that I have called the police and have filed a report. While I hate having to do this and prefer to resolve things in a calm, peace, calm, peaceful manner, I will only tolerate so much. I know for a fact that this has happened before and to other employees who chose to leave rather than deal with such nonsense. Unfortunately for those that are trying so hard to chase me away, I love my city, I love my job and I will not leave without a fight. While one would assume that such things are not tolerated, I would like to prepare something formal in writing so that employees can feel a sense of security and are allowed to do their jobs in the best way possible. If it isn't black and white, then there is no need for concern or confusion as to what steps are to be taken should something occur. For example, someone were to call screaming, yelling, profanities, obviously, I'm gonna ask them to calm down if they continue. I would like to disconnect the phone call and not feel that I'm gonna get in trouble if I do so. I've asked other municipalities for their policies as well and sent a request to the Georgia Municipal Association seeking their advice, but I would like the blessing of the council to move forward with this. And I'd also like any suggestions and recommendations that the council would have. Once a document is developed, I will bring it back to the council for approval and a vote. So, I'm asking the council to vote on whether or not to prepare a detailed formal policy in regards to this. And looking for any suggestions or anything that you would like to see before one is put together.
Jeff, you have any knowledge of stuff like that as far as, I mean, there has to be something.
Well, obviously, I mean, at its base, it's a, probably disorderly conduct to be coming in here cursing somebody, so I mean, you can call the police anytime. Question I have is, can you bar someone from City Hall? What does it take to do that? What's the level? Can we do a criminal trespass warning on a citizen? I don't know, I mean, my feeling is, you'd think so, surely, you can't come in here and be irate and then expect to be able to come back.
Tomorrow.
We probably don't need to support that. If that is, if that would help, if it would help that next time you show up here, you're getting arrested.
Yeah, because you can say something, but I mean, it's even just with other policies like the sanitation policy where, you know, when you say, okay, when you haven't paid your bill, so you're gonna be disconnected, people, but if you have that piece of paper right there and people see it in black and white, it means something. And I mean, unfortunately, we have a history where people have, have acted in such an unethical manner and, you know, like, they've just gotten slapped on the rest or it just gets ignored and we hope it goes away, but obvious, and like I said, it's a handful of people, but, you know, I mean, just like, you know, the other, last week, for example, Mr. Fawcett, you know, and him having just out there trying to do his job and getting cursed at and, you know, I mean, he shouldn't have to do that, he should be able to do his job and not have to worry about, you know, I, I going on Facebook and, you know, I mean, social media can be a nightmare. I mean, thank goodness, most people called to get a firsthand answer as to what the situation actually was rather than going over.
That never became an issue to begin with. It just made up and then that took half your day and then other people.
And I mean, yes, it was embarrassing and it got to the point where the auditor felt uncomfortable being here, doing her job because the situation escalated.
To safety, and let me ask you this too, cause I know, like, when it comes to, if I go to my daughter's school, I can't just walk in school. I have to be buzzed in, and the thing, push it, they try to see who it is and buzz you in. Could we put something like that on the door here?
Absolutely.
I would feel better.
There's nothing in it all that says everybody's supposed to walk in all the time.
And I mean, the gentleman that actually installed the camera system, he was here doing the, the initial work, the initial camera work, someone had come in and kind of was acting a fool, and he had actually recommended something like that where it's a remote system that they buzz and I can buzz them in and unlock the door.
Absolutely.
So, those, those types of things are available and a lot of smaller towns, cities from what I, the people that I've spoken to, when I kind of put the word out, they actually do do that, like if you have one person working in or whatever have you or you know, that enables people to kind of control the situation better and I hate to do that, cause like I said, most people come in and they're lovely, they bring me cakes and fruits and smiles and pay their trash bill and, you know, it, it's, it's just lovely to be with people and like I said, it's, it's.
But it takes that one person that destroys that whole feeling of security and safety.
And I don't know, you may not be set up that you could create a physical barrier.
I thought of that too.
You know, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what our office has, you can't just, it's really blocking the rest of the office, you know?
Well, it's like basically right now, anybody has access to her in any.
Daily, right.
And they can't expect her to stop what she's doing and attend to whatever, and usually, I would think that it would be, you know, something that I actually need and not.
And I mean, the auditor basically asked me, she's like, someone on one to ten, that was an eleven, I said, no, that was barely pushing a two and a half and she was mortified, you know, I mean, she's like that, I can't. She's like, you hear about those things, but you don't even, you know, you just don't expect them to happen.
Well, unfortunately, here, people have direct access to somebody, I mean, you walk into another city, okay, now, maybe receptionist there, you're probably not gonna curse that person, plus there's a bunch of other people in the building.
And I mean, I understand that everybody has a bad day, you know, and I'm tough, like, people are upset, you know. Yeah, but when it's, it's, when it's occurring over and over again, when one, when people begin to think that they can get away with it, it becomes a habit.
Well, and I mean, we should get arrested. Because the habit was prosecuted.
That's it.
Right.
And wanted to get behind her and prosecute.
Do something in a time or two, it'll stop it.
Still draw up that form.
We can, we'll work on policy.
I would like to know expense wise too, like what it would cost to put some kind of blocking system or like you said, like some type of barrier, just, you know.
I can look at those options and get some pricing and stuff.
Because if somebody gets, you'd like to be able to just slam the window and be done, you know?
I probably would be done. You just, you don't treat people that way.
You know, it's gotten to the point where, I, I mean, I, I feel blessed to be able to not only live here and but work here and, and help my neighbors out and assist that, you know? But now I've kind of realized why people are grateful that they don't necessarily live in the city that they work for, because you do have issues where I had to frost my windows because people were driving me crazy, stopping their cars and staring in my house. You know, I shouldn't have to do that, like I said, it's a handful, but, you know, rather than deal with the drama, just frosting my windows.
If it happens anymore, call the nine-one-one and get them arrested.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, it's stalking, it's disorderly conduct, it's any number of things, I mean, I would say, feel free to call the police.
I agree with that, yes.
I mean, I have, both agencies have been great, you know, they come by, they check on me, you know, and things like that, so both Pickens and Cherokee's been really good about that, just stop by, visit and check on me and ask me how I'm doing. Sometimes I'll just put in a call if they can't make it, you know, if they can't necessarily stop up here. I mean, it's not, I hate to say it, I mean, it's not that I'm necessarily terrified, if something's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, but it's just wrong and it's disrespectful. It's not, yeah.
You're not gonna go to any other job than worry about that.
Yeah, but I think one of the things Tina is concerned with is the one in question, is this close to a TC now, a CT now? And if she makes the call, the next time they come out, they're gonna arrest them, it's gonna come around.
So, what?
So, I think her thing is, is before that happens.
Make sure that's okay.
She wants you guys to know.
You can call the police.
It's worth it, or you shouldn't even have to ask them. I wouldn't think twice about it if I was feeling threatened.
Well, and like I said, I just, I, I mean, and I know you, you all have been wonderful, I've come here, I've spoken to you all individually about it before and I feel like I have that support, you know, but I just don't want someone coming up here and being, you know, well, she hung up on me or she this or she that.
Let them do it, and then you turn around and say, you know what, I hung up on you because this was your behavior. When you act like a child, you get treated like a child.
But if you want, I mean, I understand to, to have a guideline to say, this is the thing that gets the police call, this is the thing, so everybody knows it. There's no question, cause I know that that line probably is sometimes gray, as to when they hit the point that they have crossed the line.
So, go for it.
Yeah, when I tell you where you live and stuff like that, that's crossing the line.
And you shouldn't, what he's doing to you is no different than what a previous council member did to me. And I built it publicly because you have to, and it stopped. Sorry, I'm getting in a tangent, but it's, that to me is, you have children, it's unacceptable.
So, we'll look into barriers, pricing on things like barriers and a buzzing, like buzzing system, and then I'll work with Jeff on some kind of policy.
And send them a copy out.
Or they have to sign for it.
Yeah, right. All right, that band was down to number eight, public appearances.
Don't take that.
All right.
Hello, I'm Keith Johnson, I'm new in town, couple months, moved here from California, so it's my first meeting here and I wanted to say hello and ask a few questions, how things operate, if that's okay, so.
Yeah, if you could come up to the podium, or is that what she can get you on, or you're gonna be on camera, so smile.
Questions I had, some of the issues you're discussing, when or if or how does you get public input?
Like right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
On the cell tower and that type of thing?
Well, that would, like, that would come up again, and I know with a lot of stuff, she has to run out in the paper for public notice that, you know, that this is going on, if you want to come talk about it. We've done it several times, like in regards to the police department and you just really don't have a turnout.
If it was something like that, what we would, I would advertise a public hearing in the papers as well as on the face, I also put it on Facebook and on our website so that residents could come speak on it and on, on anything big like that that would affect people, yes.
And maybe with their computer, connect email base into email as well or something. Some of the issues, maybe you might want to consider some projection system, so when you're looking at documents, the public has a
Good idea.
Right, an opportunity to see what issue you're referencing or pass them out, maybe a copy.
Yeah, I just did it, I'm sorry, I normally put out some of these things, it was just, it was a huge honk and honk of trees, so I can actually email those out.
On a burning glow, baby.
Yeah.
You can leave with this one if you want to.
Yeah, it's okay, just maybe as a practice of public. Some lights out on the, picking the street, streetlights that are, maybe bulbs or whatever due to the lights in the street.
I put a call into Emma Colwell today, thank you.
I got a four-way stop sign, I live like five hundred feet from that stop sign next to the church there, so it needs a stripe on the street, cause you can't really tell where to stop. It's all worn out. And is there a two thousand eighteen agenda or goals for the city? Is that a, is there master plan or anything?
We have a capital improvement plan, but right now, we're also working on the comprehensive plan, I can give you a copy of the one that is expiring to give you an idea. What we're doing is working on one that will be reapproved as of June of twenty eighteen and that will kind of, it's a projected plan that we work with the Northwest Georgia Planning Commission to work on. It includes, you know, we fall into the Pickens County side on that, but I can also email you that as well if you want.
Has the city ever done a survey to the citizens, asked them what they wanted, I mean, a full-on survey? And got, gathered input from the citizens at all, as to what they'd like or what their issues are?
Once the specific topic.
Just generally a survey once every five years or whatever, that, what their issues are, what they like, or what they'd like to see the council do. On the security, maybe if it's really, if they've got really extreme weather and you want to do security, you might want to just build a small gate like a courthouse has a gate before you go into the judge chamber, maybe it's something lower where you buzz in. Just about, rather than, you know, lock them out of the front door. Yeah, and if you need security on your website for password, I can talk to separately, there's a brand new product that eliminates web, completely no passwords anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about the, the concert that's coming up?
Oh, Saturday at four thirty, I'm helping the pilgrim church, that's the one up the hill, the white one. It's a hundred and four years old, continuously operating. Put together a community Christmas program, the whole community's been invited, you should all get a postcard in your mail tomorrow or the next day. And this little banner out front that's lit up at night in front of the church, but it's four thirty this Saturday. The whole community's invited, there's gonna be Christmas carols and things for kids and stuff like that, so this is a, my way of kind of helping out the community, maybe to draw some people together and shake hands and get to know who your neighbors are and and, you know what, I am for God's sake, no, just kidding, um, anyway. Yeah, so Saturday, four thirty.
Doesn't hear any stops I saw, right? Of course, we gotta turn.
Anybody else? Make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
All in favor?